Sarah Rapunzel, Town Leader. Gary Pelletier, Building Commissioner. Leslie Noyes, Constitution Maker. Robert Lynch, House Fund Manager, Director. Jamie Collery, Facility Rescuer. John Cooden, Government Teacher. Kevin Meyer, Arts and Recreation Director. Josie Goldstein Walsh, Youth Alliance Report. Anna Farner, Library Director. We're happy to have Representative Sean Dooley with us, too.
Thank you.
And a special welcome also as well to our new chief of police, Michelle Corrath.
I said I'm gonna be following you. I gotta make sure that this is screaming audio.
Happy to be here. Welcome to Menfield and a special high five back to you, Chief Paul Hawley. We appreciate your service, your dedication, your professionalism. Thank you very much. Okay, our meeting guidelines, as we move forward, is somehow our papers one through three of our report of the law. I won't read them all, but I will identify a couple of them. The moderator will recognize the law, create the purpose of making, the making motion on each article. If they have a positive motion, I will be asking them to make a report. As each article of the law is presented, a reminder, the discussion and the vote is on the motion. Not as the article is printed, but the motion that's on the floor is what we will be voting, and what we'll be voting about. To avoid any confusion, I only allow one motion to amend at a time on the floor at any one time. Any voter wishing to speak? Any voter wishing to speak to the town leader should go over to the nearest microphone. I have the United Microphone Number One and Microphone Number Two. While I would recognize, I ask that you adjust the count through the moderator. If you would, it will be out of practice as it usually is to take voice votes. If the moderator is in doubt, as you know, a vote of voice vote will last for a show of hands. But still, in the doubt, the count by standing vote will be taken. It's a challenge of the industry by the deputy moderator. Once the voting is seen, it's immense, so further discussion will be allowed upon motion from the moderator. If they ask to open the vote, we will only want to do that on the time. And I think that's all the rest of the guidelines. I don't know if you can, if I say articles one through three. Tonight, in terms of the water proceedings, unlike the last year where we have a whole collection, complex array of articles. We're gonna go back and give you the very straightforward title. First, we take a consent calendar, and then we will do the two personnel issues. Article of seven and eight, they can pick up anywhere on the floor. We could call the operating budgets and we do them. Right after we pick a consent calendar, and then we'll do the zoning articles, which are articles twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. And then all of the other articles will be subject to our traditional water. A report on the law, for the annual town meeting, I just want, it's very handy value. I'm referring you to Mike Passory's editorial box of pages five and six. There's a review of town finances on page seven through twelve. The town of Metfield's tax levy information, the town on page thirteen. A budget overview on page fourteen. High taxes for expenditures and revenues on page fifty. Observant transfers on page sixty. And a sizable debt ex-communicable on page seventy. And then, for many of you that can follow along how we're doing, page fifty-nine, the report of the law is a shortcut to keep track. We open with the laws, and I ask Mike Passory to triple to the water committee to make some further remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, all of you. Good evening, and thank you sincerely for taking the time to fill this important town function. We were last there tonight, so I'm not going to sit here and talk to you when you can just read my remarks in the yellow book in front of you. But there are a few things I want to highlight this year. First and foremost is that thanks to the hard work of many, we were able to be articles presenting accurate and balanced town, balanced budget for town meeting. And avoiding the need for an operational override. But, that being said, there are several challenges ahead. And just because we were able to present an overhyped free budget this year, doesn't mean we'll be able to do so next year. So please keep that in mind as we review the budget and vote on another laundry articles. For example, over the next few years, we're going to see more articles related to the state hospital, the U.S.A. school, new parks and rec facility, and whatever board operational infrastructure upgrades. Additionally, in order to balance this year's budget, it was necessary to postpone a number of capital budget releases that do not begin on the budget. Consistent delays in capital infrastructure improvements will not serve the town in the long run. Now, to be able to avoid an operational override persisting here is really a small feat. And would not be possible without the stewardship of Christine Drew Byler in her first year as town administrator. The diligent work of her financial team. And really the cooperation, collaboration dedication sacrificed to our common ends. Special thanks is owed to Mike LaFrancesca, who provided significant expertise and support all the young officials on this region. And additional thanks for the amount of support that we, the school committee, as well as who we worked closely with through the process. Each member of the water committee up here, your dedication with the sales and just the positive attitude to what this process is doing. I appreciate that. There is no shortage of important and expensive decisions to make as the town coming years. We need to get some issues head on in a pragmatic, creative, honest approach to ensure the town's fiscal health. While keeping up the services that make this town safe and secure. So thank you for really helping those efforts and for that discussion.
And my role, and the scene, you can hold your marks. You're all.
First, I would like to say that I was about like, you know, if you would create this, you're talking about, it's all, all this department is working on. I would beg on my stories, as long as I can make everyone enough about collaboration and influence that we have during the process. If you look through your water board, you'll see that we actually have an active third one for this season tonight. We still have a process and another operational override this year. And once we put that on the line, there's a school committee, also a board, some services, and we're certainly acting how hard we can. So thank you for all of that, for making that happen. However, and also, I don't have a promise, I can't call the U.K. moon, that's my also. If you have any suggestions, please let me know through the chair. But it isn't even like, I have a rule, I said, we were presenting the fast study tonight. And I think even more is not override, but there are still issues with the capital budget, I need to pre-pass that, because the positive numbers are coming. And the biggest thing to do is start to worry about there are additional barriers that come up. So our job will be, as you will report, start to investigate, and figure out where they come from. And to start asking, considering that story, how we are, having, we're, we're, the original, next to, on, what, we're just investigating, or have we got that?
Yes.
We have to, we need to start asking this year, the question, how are we gonna let, how are we, are we?
Sorry, this program, I had it on.
How are we gonna increase, how are we gonna address, how are we gonna have this, now, so, not having, you know, about, it's something that didn't happen last year. How are we gonna, how are we providing services from a spot that we're not, we're not hiring employees, or something, and it's not what it's meant to be. So we need to hear, we also need to provide, we're not dividing the term on cost. So all the words here, actually, I'm sure, I'm sure, it's much easier than what I like. We may see a small, looking even more, you have, that might be several people.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Let's try that again. Articles missing. Article six, twelve, and thirty-one. Do I have second to that? Are second to it? So move, Holland, break with please say aye. And then declare that the motion carries and now it's through. The next articles that we're going to consider are Articles number eight, uh, seven and eight. It will be found beginning on page twenty-two of the law report. Article seven, article fix the salaries and compensation of elected officers. This is my favorite article. And, uh, it's on page twenty-two. And we have a report from, uh, the law committee member, Jerry Marsette.
Motion. Yes, uh, it is a positive motion. Uh, move that Article seventy passed in print in the law report. Each year, town meeting must vote salaries and compensation of elected officers. And when the elected officers receive a salary at time correct, board assesses and reports one. The assessors is not only receive nine hundred dollars per year, it's unchanged for five years. The town clerk's proposed salary reflects two percent annual salary increase in the year. The warrant committee recommends passing.
Any questions on Article seven? As far as this superiority, nobody wants to stand and then want to raise compensation this year. Okay, so without any amendments, then we'll vote on the motion suggested by Mr. Marsette. All in favor please say aye. Close. And motion carries and now it's through. Article eight is an article to amend the personnel administrative plan, classifications of positions and pay schedule. This is standing business in page twenty-three of the report on the law. And again, I ask Jerry Marsette to review this motion.
Move that Article eight be passed in print in the law report. And give a report of this. The town employees' salaries are set by the schedules included in the law report and included in the Personnel Administration Plan. School department employees by state statute or statute are excluded from the Personnel Administration Plan. Most police, fire, and school department employees are covered by collective bargaining agreements. Police and fire personnel are included in the presented case schedules according to the rates set forth in that collective bargaining agreements. The personnel board has recommended general salary increase for town on unit personnel two percent. Managed personnel positions are also eligible to receive merit increases based on performance. The warrant committee recommends passing.
Any questions and comments on this article? Article eight, if there are none, we'll vote on the motion suggested. All in favor please say aye. Close. And leave the carries and now it's through. We now can move to Articles number twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. These are the articles that are sponsored by the planning board. Uh, all having to do with some, all three of them require the two thirds of each. So we're going to vote the vote to be passed. And I will turn it to, uh, the law committee member, Luke Thompson, for a motion on Article twenty-three.
Who, Article twenty-three, you can ask this person if you want. Yeah, do you have a report? Uh, no. Um, the circle, the circle was in five parts, first of which creates a zoning law for the district. That the dirt's zoning requirements, the two thousand seventeen period process, processes of additional requirements for multi-family developments. But does not apply to single-family or two-family apartments in the U.S.S. State District. In the second section of the article, it mentions table these regulations to allow multi-family residential developments. A second plan, a third plan, the board, in the body zoning district, is largely shared with the express street of our district. The third section of the article, it mentions all prior regulations to allow multi-family residential developments in the body zoning district. Is largely shared with the express street of our district. The fourth section of the article, it closes the number of peripheries. The board agrees when we're doing new applications for multi-family developments, which are consistent with the board's special permit for standards. The fifth and final section of the article, it mentions existing inclusionary zone by law to include multi-family households and other express streets of our district. So that there is a formal report. The warrant committee recommends passing.
Anywhere for a report from the planning board?
Yes. I just want to, um, um, how's the word being associated with the percentage of the twenty-three district? Public systems for the district that presume to be visiting the national law stack of the city's system by the community. But the number of states that they're reading is on December the third, twenty thirteen, June seventh, twenty nineteen, and April twenty nineteen. To consider maybe the time that feels something about a step up in twenty-three. The public area for the first one, I decide to assume question asking, like, pressing the question for, uh, twenty-two. And the public area for the last section, I presume to assume question asking, like, pressing the question for, uh, twenty-three, yeah, for this company. This article is applicable to the units related to multi-family residential law. In that portion, Army District along the same street between the old street and Baxter Park. This warrant in the building, it's always hanging up because it's messing up the asset that we're talking about, that's the cross street street of the district. And the first three sections of this part of the article is sourced from both the initial because of that small area of town that were replaced prior to the twenty seventeen zoning changes anyway. They were instituted to reduce the amount of multi-family that would fill Army District in the twenty seventeen Kings attack. After doing a child study in Army District, and then seeing justice there. The fourth section of the article, this is an additional way area, not kind of a group of scientific processes about any board samples and additional side handling criteria to incentivize better submissions from the higher working that I hope means the assistance of the areas of the district that I was saying earlier. And as a whole, I think we're going to be able to make a decision, recommend passing.
Okay, which one is it? If you have any questions, if you have any questions, can you do any more? Or reply to three or four, three, four, one, two, three.
I have four people.
As far as, as far as, we might just say, we didn't have that.
The dark line, uh, basically, uh, five. So I just have a quick question about the map. It's just the shade in the area here, not.
Yeah, okay.
That's it.
Yes. Thank you. Any questions, Thomas? If there are none, we'll, please, uh, move on.
Mary's seventh street.
Just, just American white.
My grandfather turned to town and said, we have to.
Six-four.
Um, so I'm, I mean, that, well, and so what I want to make sure that people understand, but when somebody goes through, they will walk off the town to, um, ask for regular, you know, that other. And the reason for that is that this home of the district will require that one item that is assumed is the, um, inclusionary housing, which is not a system. So that actually increases the opportunity for us to get this address. Um, and I think that some of them, um, priority access to other grants, such as funding sources that are critical to their, uh, for their projects. And it will less me, it more for us to continue with, um, not worrying so much about larger, including their markets on the floor. We have to make it this people are out of the way.
Two, three, four.
Best practices, um, in developing our town.
Soft again.
This overall allows us to get the fourth one, one, two. So this overall law, you know, before the best practice. Um, planning board has a much stronger precedent for this, this star. And I think that there's been maybe a little bit of conversation that would cause twice the net, cause us to be wrong, as they were in the two thousand seventeen. But my vote is for voting, actually changes to four and five. So when I talk about which changes for, um, which is, but I will just go away without any problem. I mean, I've been in my house for twenty-three years, I'm not moving. The Harris next door, Ben, yeah, I've spent five minutes, they're not moving. They think we've been on them, but also more, this has your, you know, they're not moving.
The audio's the one. The audio.
For the inclusionary houses, we have an empty, or hungry.
Instead of houses.
What's going on here?
At first, pause on Second Third Street. I was, um, disappointed on the dates for the public hearing for this particular proposal, just because I just didn't.
With a wire.
I had conflicts those nights. But I was heavily involved with the, um, discussions and meetings, um, that led to the two thousand seventeen vote to reduce, um, the change to the bylaw, um, in Army District. And that's the first street resident on the area store, Suri, um, off of the, the south side of the St. Louis Street of Route twenty-seven. That is equally in store. Um, I have little concerns about the north section of Route twenty-seven becoming a lot more dense. We are dealing with tremendous traffic, traffic problems, as it is on First Street and also on South Street. And with more development, um, the northern part of twenty-seven, leaving the center of town, that we causing a lot of, um, concern for me. Um, in particular, in these meetings that led to the last change in the zoning order to two thousand seventeen. Um, listening to, um, the comments of the, the residents who live in the section that is affected by this overlay district. Um, they were the ones, there was a core of residents from that section that really thought that two thousand seventeen change. And now I feel like this, um, this change today that's being proposed reverses a lot of good that was done by that committee. That there was a lot of thought, a lot of research, and a lot of effort into that. Um, and it just, I'm very concerned about the overdevelopment and the multi-family housing that's going to create a lot more problems and a lot more density that we really need in that city. So I can't see.
Thank you, uh, to the one of us now. You have to put it, Thomas. It will put it, the vote does require two thirds votes, a motion created due to the overlay district, of the proposed Upper Street Street overlay district. All in favor please say aye. Aye. Close. And that's showing if they all pay with these, uh, uh, I'm going to deem it as passed by the two thirds required. Uh, before we wind up on the report, welcome President P. Scott, and please be there again. As a great honor, Representative Harris, as I would say, I thank you. Article twenty-four is also a zoning amendment found on page fifty-three of the report of the law. Uh, it is an article to amend the code of chapter three hundred and forty for special permits. Uh, the law committee member, Christine Hart, has a motion to report.
I think the motion moved that Article twenty-four be passed in print in the law.
You give a report of this.
This article would place the existing ZBIA special permit criteria with the special permit criteria that was adopted by the committee board in two thousand and seventeen. It passed from ZBIA and family board apply the same criteria when adhering to special permit application. The number that the ZBIA support is aligned with. The warrant committee recommends passing.
Okay, the report, the report.
Yes, and I'm going to address the Articles twenty-four and five, which probably are completely consistent with the same thing. So the version of the provisions and the messages, the message of the ZBIA seventy-five, has been in the net field plan of, uh, series of public hearings in June seventh, twenty nineteen, and February nineteen, twenty nineteen. Some of the net field, some bylaws, and I'm, uh, twenty-five, and I've seen a few that have been before, um, for updated such that, uh,
Article 18. Article 18 is an article for appropriate funds raised from local meal tax and include the economic liabilities of town. The article can be found in Page 45 of the Lockport Report, authored by the Board of Selectmen, and on motion and report from the Board of Selectmen, on the ball sign. Rules that the town appropriated in dollars set some to be raised on fiscal year 2020 tax levy to get improvements to the economic vitality of town. In funding this article comes from receipts for the meal tax which is estimated to depart one hundred fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year 2020. In prior years, the town has appropriated fifteen thousand annually to Selectmen fund, funded to be used for the pocket park, the holiday school, and beautification at the town hall. Projects under consideration include funding for beautification, landscaping at the town hall, tree planting, landscaping at the Keith House, and increased funding for the holiday school. The current balance in this fund is approximately nineteen thousand, and considering the history of spending and the need to control spending, we recommend funding of one thousand in 2020. The Warren Committee recommends passage to my report. Okay, and our report?
While usefulness this one does not mean challenge, it was created as a fifteen thousand dollars bond to be used in expression of the Board of Selectmen. Currently, as you heard, it has an excess of that amount. At the beginning of the budget process, the Warren Committee reminded the Board of Selectmen that the volume function not to use as long-term savings accounts, and provide guidance that those functions should be used to their original purpose. Minority of the Warren Committee believes the Board of Selectmen should help with the same standard, and this one should remain at fifteen thousand dollars per month.
Questions about my service, motion, article? I'm going to finish my question.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I was just getting bored. Um, so I am wondering, I think this is very minority, but I am curious why the three thousand dollars is something that everyone developed, isn't even important. It seems like it was a duty to me, the country got to do this, and well, maybe money out of here, but it just seems like a thousand dollars, I believe, is not much in the category that has any value, so I might have like two thousand, so, yeah.
Question. Do you want to go, or do you want to go?
The, uh, the account that we have there when it was first created, uh, the Warren Committee at the time, when the meal tax article was up for consideration, uh, this at the time, uh, the Warren Committee, when we discussed that, we thought that if we were going to pass businesses in town, recognizing that we're going to generate such a different industry, we could turn in some amount of those taxes to the, to the, to the business. So the reason this account was established in the first place was to promote economic development of town, who would have thought that businesses would be a little happier about paying taxes, if they knew that it's something else. Uh, now that I'm on the Board of Selectmen, I can use that fund when people have come in with requests for ways for group town, but we haven't deliberately tried to burn that money up just as we had. So the short answer on why it's thrown, why it hasn't been deployed, is we funded, I don't believe we've turned down any requests for improvements or economic development expenses to support more mild and out of town, but those are the reports that commence that sort of thing.
Any other questions?
There we go, my answer. I'm ready for you. How much money do we owe to work with, we owe just a thousand dollars, and you still have fifteen thousand dollars to split for another year? And I think that would be nineteen thousand, so I don't want you to spend it. You, you know, clarify what's there, and to be spent, and where is, or beautification, there is something to make a difference between. First, I want to make sure, you know, our, we have, we have something to make, we owe this community, and that part.
The current balance of the account is just about seventeen thousand dollars, and the third service in town hall, at Northwood Medical, and we're going to work.
Do you want, do you want? Yeah, we have a motion on the floor, a motion, uh, now, over a thousand dollars for some of the raises in their part of the county. Uh, as our motion, on favor, please say aye, 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 aye. Okay, I'm showing for the, on, on favor. The rule that carries for the judge in question. Article. Article twenty-nine is an article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to, uh, accept a gift of land on Main Street, being the town to make sure that someone will lock the port, and article offered by the Board of Selectmen, and on this one, we do have a motion, uh, uh, the report from Warren, the motion on the floor.
Yeah. Uh, motion to see if the town, the Board of Selectmen, authorized the Board of Selectmen to accept a gift of land from other Board of Selectmen, and to see if they tell it, um, as written in the warrant. This parcel was already under an observation search, which Taylor previously granted to the town when they were living on Main Street, and the house in the body of parcel. To weather the passive recreation, including the top of death, and access of private residential town, we could limit its use, uh, the Warren Committee recommends passage.
What are your questions in the comments on Article twenty-nine?
Take one.
Article twenty-one. Article number fifteen, self-care. Just in the education piece of land, um, in this, shortly, and one of the most important pieces of land in the Southwood, that field, the article says, "How is a last, non-developed piece of land based to sixty to fifty one in the town of that field?" So we walk through the old section, and we look past, and see that the property of the town, it needs to be listed, figured that this, if, then I'm trying to get a look at one of these towns. So shortly, it's important, for verification, and motion. Thank you for that. Your questions? Comments of the article, we will vote on motion to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept this letter, on favor, please say aye, 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 aye. The motion carries. Next article is Article eleven. Article eleven is an article for appropriate seven hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred forty-five in disability stabilization plan, that is offered by the Board of Selectmen and our capital budget committee. Um, the town, page four, in the first, apply a two-third protocol passage in one year, Louie Thompson, as a motion on the floor.
Moved that the town appropriated seven hundred fifty thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars to transfer set some to the municipal's capital stabilization fund, the projects are funded in the warrant. At the two thousand eighteen annual campaign, in the self-care override schedule, voters have made the approval of creation funding for a special purpose of stabilization fund entitled, "The Civil Building's Capital Stabilization Plan." The purpose of this fund is to fund the construction, capital reappearance improvements in the civil buildings, and structural and systemic improvements thereon. The projects listed above have been identified and recommended by the Capitol of Lit, to be completed in the last funded bill in the municipal building of the county's stabilization plan. The projects are either for repairs needed to town and civil buildings and infrastructure, or in this technical engineering studies, the major structural elements, and systems for those, which will determine the succession of improvements needed, and their policy. All for the purpose of providing a best and worst of the five.
Any one?
Uh, thirty questions on Article, Article one. Comments? For the item, because you want a two-third protocol, please say aye, aye, aye. The motion carries, like, two-thirds of the water.
Take one.
Our next article is Article fourteen. Article fourteen is article to transfer Uber, Lyft, ride-sharing funds on Page forty-three of the Lockport, authored by the Board of Selectmen, and we have a motion and a report from Warren, the motion on the floor.
To see if the town will work during for seven hundred sixty-three dollars in funds received from the M.A.S.E.R.T., from the town share, or pre-charge for Uber, Lyft, or other rides for sharing services to retain in the town, said funds can be used for road and sidewalk improvements, or doing gap in the motion there, too. Under Chapter one eighty-seven of the Acts of two thousand sixteen, ride-sharing companies who do business in Massachusetts with their subject will provide assessment of twenty cents. Half of that total amount assessed for years distributed proportionately to the municipalities. Seven hundred sixty-three dollars is not field share of that assessment, which according to the statute must be used for the aggressive impact of transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure, or any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of transportation and road services. The Board of Selectmen has earmarked these funds for road and sidewalk repairs, which should be mindful of in the intent of the statute, particularly related to sidewalks, um, in this town, um, need to be addressed, and the Warren Committee recommends passage.
Any questions on Article fourteen? The comments require super authority, for the item, with a motion to transfer, if you would use ride-sharing funds, on favor, please say aye, aye, aye. The motion carries.
Take one. Take one.
Next motion is motion, uh, Article sixteen. Article sixteen is an article to authorize acceptance of gift of land on Mohawk Street. Uh, it is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, on Page forty-four, for the Lockport Report, and we have a, uh, motion and a report from Warren, the motion on the floor.
Moved that Article sixteen has a twenty-eighteen requirement. This is a one-note long parcel plan, applying patents, locating in that field, and what the property owners have offered to build, causing the locating in that field to the town to employ many additional taxes. If voters approve this article, may have that be compared to satisfy the property with two classes, one in the local and one in that field, before it's due to be prepared. We have a discussion with the local planning engineers on the take cooperation of the subdivision plan, so that that field is not burdened with such costs. This article authorizes the Board of Selectmen to accept a medical parcel for municipal purposes when ready to be made by owner. The Warren Committee recommends passage.
Any questions in the comments on Article sixteen, on motion? For the item, we do the vote for us, a super authority, on favor, please say aye, aye, aye. And we leave it at that, our address. Article twenty-six. Article twenty-six is an article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to implement to require bits with adult and senior housing, and town on land of ice shelves road. This is an article sponsored by the Affordable Housing Trust, defining, uh, article on Page fifty-five to lock the port. Article twenty-six does require two-thirds of the passage, and we do have a, uh, motion and a report from a lock committee member, a clause sign.
Two.
Article twenty-six. Rules that Article twenty-six we passed as printed in the warrant, except that the period is eight sixty-two plus, after the period is seen, uh, also be added. This article contains the five point four eight acres of the nine point seven acre parcel purchased by the town in two thousand one to one point one million. The assessed value of the nine point seven acres is one hundred ninety-four thousand. Proceeds for any sales shall be pocketed in reserve stabilization trust or other fund that they need to the town's long-term liabilities and warrants for section five of the Town of Metro County policies. The terms of the development of the property will be senior housing, the handicapped accessory units, a minimum of twenty-five percent will be afforded, de-restricted to seventy percent of the apartment, with reasonable condition of pricing and sustainable supply support required. In January two thousand nineteen, senior housing council released the results of the two thousand eighteen survey, the mental household, that at least one person fifty-five or older. The survey indicated a high demand for senior housing, and sixty-five percent responded saying they will move to senior housing in the next two years if it's over there. The development of this property will contribute to the availability of senior housing, the Warren Committee's voice has been described. Uh, thank you. We have a, uh, presentation, short presentation from Selectmen, and I'm not much.
Thank you, Mr. Montoya. Please, we have the trust. This relates to, uh, to the, uh, completely, also the plan, and, uh, this, uh, this study. Now, we're going to serious in the case, uh, before locally, that was taught to the housing, the other's, uh, with, 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 of course, the last three years, which is a bad vice, standing need for which it's, uh, the leader did not be met currently by market, this is a piece of land, uh, with the boxes, uh, with the private office, private people, and, uh, portion of this, uh, the, uh, there's a reality check, because of the decision, and going for reason, that, uh, you would, since any senior property has a, uh, in the street, uh, we cannot satisfy every senior senior, and it's, uh, the, the law, and the, the, to really have two choices on the issue coming off, uh, the, the, as you said, one is enough, and wait to see the fellow official of the, the, uh, present this way, if you're willing to, 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 to,
discomfited with these plastic bags. Couple of main reasons for me, if they put too much in the bag, the handle would fall off, and all my groceries would be on the parking lot. That was number one. And number two, I just, they all kind of fell apart when I put them in my trunk. So four years ago, I changed to have a trunky bag reusable, and I've been doing it for four years. And as Nathan said, she's right, the kids allow you to use it, but what you do, it's kind of like putting it in your seatbelt, you still, you automatically use it. And what's so nice about these, the handles don't fall apart, also you can stand up in the trunk, it doesn't all stop over like plastic bags. So I just wanted to say that I certainly favor this thing.
Okay, so then you're not sleeping opposition after that. Okay. We have enough for our comments, article twenty one, you voted the highest, just say single, no, we do it.
Just one comment. So, what would you judge on, uh, your opinion? So, I am a supplier for the restaurant industry. To give an idea, how many bags we sell to the restaurant industry, and to fill this room, let's not put that. I cannot express my gratitude enough for the people who are making the change to get rid of these bags, because they, people know, we sell them, we sell them out of convenience as well. Bags from China, huge container ships, and they end up, so they take up very little space. When they ship to us, we'll have twenty five hundred bags in a, in a sack. Once they're preserved, that twenty five hundred volume that takes up, you know, infants, is, you can just imagine, at one ounce of air, that your bag, and you've got ten times as fast. So I call this, the folks who are passing this, I'm disappointed that the state haven't taken the lead on this, but many are, are listening to be heard, and we'll, we'll sort of transfer away from plastics, away from plastic drugs, eventually, we can see. It's unbelievable how much of that ends up in our streams, oceans, et cetera, and how much of it ends up mixing into our, our food. Thank you.
Okay, let's flip article, before you want to vote, all in favor of the motion, you voted dialogue, please say aye?
Aye.
Ahs? And the motion carries. The next article is article number five. Article five is an article in which we vote for chap, chapter four, and section fifty three F, in the settlement of the G fund, talked about the board's selectmen, a lot of committee members, Steve Barton has a positive motion, and it will be reported.
Move that the town vote to accept Massachusetts general law after forty four sets of fifty three F and three quarters to the settlement of public education, government, health, and access to cable related funds to reserve cable franchise fees and other cable related revenues for appropriation to support head access services to oversight and renewal of the cable franchise agreement, which begins on July one, two thousand and nineteen. Massachusetts Department of Revenue has issued a new guideline on how cities and towns handle this provision of funds to see the connection of the franchise agreements between the town and the cable offerings. This article creates a special revenue fund, as in company mechanism, where the funds are distributed to LPTV, for public educational and or governmental access cable television services. One issue that I want to be said, who are the funds appropriated by town meeting? This treats a part of a lot of cable companies who now have to wait for a vote at town meeting for incorporation of these funds. Now, LPTV has been prepared of this, and have not found state appropriate until incorporation is made at the next town meeting. A bill has been filed in the Senate to amend the statute to eliminate the word appropriate, in order to allow municipal to directly cable operator. The water committee recommends passing.
Any questions or comments on the motion on article five? The article will put a vote on, if you please say aye?
Aye.
Ahs? Article five carries. The next article is article number twenty eight. Article number twenty eight is an article authored by the board of selectmen, found in the district of six, to amend the code, chapter ten, about the town court duties. And we have a, a motion, a positive motion, and it will be reported from my best.
To see if the town would amend the code of the town that deals chapter ten, section ten dash eight, notification of point, by striking section entirely, and substituting there, therefore, a strength in the warrant. The town is an adding language to the end of the dialogue, which is certification in twenty fourteen, to allow the clerk to make assumptions of their format and changes. This article, to me, offers the need to feedback by giving the clerk authority to do this automatically as end of change, to the warrant here in this passage.
Any questions on the motion on article twenty eight? Requires a simple majority in the tax. Okay, so I will ask all in favor, please say aye? Ahs? Okay, the motion on article twenty eight passes. The next article is article nineteen. Article nineteen is an article that provides for transfer of funds from sewer governance standing events into sewer stabilization fund. It's authored by the town administrator's office, article forty six, and Amanda Hall has a, a motion to report.
Given that the town transfer eighty five thousand dollars from sewer governments, they can advance to sewer stabilization fund. Sewer governments are assessed property owners from sewers that are extending to their properties. That government can be paid on all funds for one single five, standing five years, and annual assessments plus interest are added to the real estate tax bill with a third and fourth payments, actual tax bills. Property owners may choose an early payoff of this assessment, usually done when a property is sold or remined. The money from these early payoffs are set aside and incorporated to a sewer governance stabilization fund, which is used to spread out the use of this fund, but the remaining five are the funds issued to pay for more. This year, as for several years, four hundred thousand dollars is referred to be taken from the stabilization fund to offset annual sewer debt payments. The balance in the fund, as it was integrated first two thousand and eighteen, was five hundred twenty nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars in eighteen cents. The sewer extension debt will be paid off in this three years, twenty twenty two, at this time, the stabilization fund will close. The water committee recommends passing.
Any questions, comments on article nineteen? Requires a simple majority to pass it. If there are questions or comments, we will vote on, if you please say aye?
Ahs?
The motion carries. The next article is article number ten, which is about capital budget. Saying with precedent, we will consider articles nine and article ten together, so we'll be doing our budgets now. We'll start with our operating budget. Our operating budget can be found on page twenty nine. It does require a two thirds majority for passage. Beginning on page thirty one, I'm going to read the line items, the budget line items. I'm just going to read their caption. If you would like some further consideration on any of these budget line items, just please yell out a call, and you'll come back to these. They have come from people who've seen it before. Here we go. Workers' compensation insurance. Healthy life insurance. Liability insurance. Unemployment compensation. Medicare insurance. County retirement contribution. Selecting salaries. Selecting operations. Town administrator salaries. Town administrator operations. Water committee operations. Town accountant salaries. Town accountant's operation. Assessment salary. Assessment operations. Treasure collector salary. Treasure collector operations. Highway salaries. Highway operations. Snow and ice salary. Snow and ice operations. Streetlining operations. Equipment repair maintenance salaries. Equipment repair maintenance operations. Thank you. Come back. Explain that. Now, we're going back to the top of page thirty, do a bit of a situation, go back up to that page. We're hearing rumbling on both sides, and I wasn't sure what was happening, but I know it's not good if that rumble is starting. Okay. Here we go again, back to the top of page thirty, do town council operations. Human resource salaries. Human resource operations. Information technology salaries. Information technology operations. Controlling election, destroy salaries, controlling election, destroy operation. Consumption commission, salaries, consumption commission, operations. Planting salaries. Planting operations. Zoning and appeal operations. Public utilities, public maintenance, salaries. Public utilities, public maintenance, operations. The town report, salaries, town report, immediate operations. Police administration, public safety building, operations. Police operations, salaries. Police operations, operations. Driving markets, signs and operations. Fire rescue administration, salaries. Fire rescue administration, operations. Fire rescue operations, salaries. Fire rescue operations, operations. Inspectors, salaries. Inspectors, operations. Sealer's salaries. Sealer's operations. Animal control salaries. Animal control operations. Care care salaries. Care care operations. Highway salaries. Highway operations. Snow and ice salaries. Snow and ice operations. Streetlining operations. Equipment repair maintenance salaries. Equipment repair maintenance operations. Timeout operations. Public emergency building operations. Solidness disposal salaries. Solidness disposal operation. Cemetery salaries. Cemetery operations. Health operations. Public health nurses operations. Public health nurse operations. Non-sanitary personnel. Non-sanary operations. Veterans salaries. Veterans operations. Oakleaf salaries. All the oakleaf salaries. Okay. Oakleaf operations. Library salaries. Library operations. Garden recreation salaries. Garden recreation operations. The small completion operations. Grave markers and flags operations. Memorial Day and Veterans Day operations. Arts and cultural council. Stabilization fund, the reserve fund, the town debt principal, the town debt interest. Regional location of schools operations. School personnel. School administration operations. Water salaries. Water operations. Water reserve fund. Sewer salaries. Sewer operations. Sewer reserve fund. And we will hold on article, on line item zero one five nine nine dash one, oakleaf salaries. The entire budget makes two thirds vote, so I'm going to put all of the other articles up for a two thirds of them in the back. Please. Which was which one? You were the associate, okay. Okay, we're going to hold on those two items, we'll vote the major of the budget, on a two thirds basis. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Ahs? Okay, let's address those, one of the times, first to address the oakleaf, oakleaf salaries, and what would the whole wants, article number one.
Given that most of the other salaries, we would increase this in asking why this one has a reduction?
Dean, you recommend a nation for the metneal legal salary budget, which was reduced by twenty thousand dollars, only after the resignation of the city department head, Al Pod. Are you ready missing the fact that the position now?
No questions or comments on this whole? You got it? You want to stand in some position? No? Going to work. Okay, then, so let's go to voting now. So, it's just a question, you tell, you're not on the vote, it's line item, zero one five nine nine one, and the water committee recommended a hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred forty two dollars. If you're all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so that will tell everybody. It's now one two. I'm line item zero one one five two one, it's on the top of page thirty two. Human resource salaries, the water committee recommended seventy thousand seven sixty one dollars, and we have a vote.
I don't know if this is new technical. We don't really want to, if the water committee said that, we weren't really interested in seventy thousand.
You can do a question. Number one. Okay.
Seriously, uh, to, if we're being bad about it, and we want us to be honest, it's something on American money, which is here, uh, it's a difference between thirty two thousand and you, uh, that contract, I believe, you should buy them, some of them, some of them. Uh, we usually, uh, actually, we do the contract.
Take four.
We don't matter really.
Where we can get out of the, the outcome?
The reason why we have been, I mean, the reasons for twenty twenty nine, this is two, that we're fifty thousand, we're counting two hundred thousand, so we're looking at that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so again, line item zero one dash one five two dash one, human resources salaries, the values for seventy thousand seven hundred sixty one dollars in the budget, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
I give this, uh, requires, now we can vote on the entire budget and the budget numbers as well. Okay, this is our positive motion on our budget on article nine. The move that the town appropriate sixty five million, six hundred ninety seven thousand, two hundred and five dollars to the various departmental operating budgets, as set for in article nine, to the water court, under the common water committee recommends, and orders meant on the floor, the town need to create operating facilities now, to officially commence in July one, two thousand and nineteen, and that means that appropriation, the following some of the grades, the fiscal twenty tax, like the and/or transferred, motivated from the smalls. Security protection, debt interest, fifty thousand. Water enterprise fund, two million and sixteen dollars in accounting, thirty one. Uh, one, sewer enterprise fund, one million and seven thirty five thousand, seven hundred and sixty, seventy six dollars. National reserve fund, seventy five thousand dollars. Overlay surplus, two hundred thousand. Sewer governance stabilization fund, four hundred thousand. Bonding in the consumer, eight hundred and four dollars. Bonding in the G twenty, uh, two thousand seven issue, two thousand five hundred forty three dollars. Bonding in the red gate fund, two thousand one Bond union from the Red Gate Fund, two thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars. Bond union from the Metfield High School field, renovation, three thousand dollars. Bond union from the Campbell Rock Shore, right, two thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars. Music school property, revolving fund, thirty thousand. Uh, M W P A T, L five, second loan, we see, four thousand one hundred. M S B A, R E D A N, just three persons, point eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars. M S B A, winning to our school debt, is one million and one hundred forty-eight, uh, five, thirty-five dollars. And free cash, that can be transferred to stabilization, will be a hundred thousand, so the subtotal of the other revenue sources will be five million, seven hundred sixty-six thousand, ten hundred forty-six dollars. Uh, cash money, the fiscal year, the twenty tax revenues are total, will be fifty-nine million, nine hundred thirty thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars. Total amount of appropriation, right hand motion, will be sixty-five, six hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars. Any final questions or comments? Uh, we'll put that project to the vote with more than two thirds, that has to be, please say aye. Aye, aye. What's your answer? Okay, Article ten is our capital budget. Go ahead, so, uh, I'm beating that in, uh, past how we require two thirds. Uh, Article ten is our capital budget. Uh, if you found the page forty of the, uh, the law report, it also requires a two thirds vote. The law committee members, Sean, Dick, Joe, has a motion and a report.
We've charged seventy-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars for capital spending that is entered into the department board. Under FY twenty capital budget recommendations, under the law committee recommends call. And if one is left, we offer us to sell, create a town, open a new property, and set out the law report. The proceeds of which shall be applied to the FY twenty capital budget performance. And this will be set up for creation, five hundred thirty thousand to be spent in the water and price cap, free cash. Hundred and thirty-six thousand to be spent in sewer enterprise fund, free cash. Forty thousand to be spent on ALS, the wall fund. And fifty-six thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars to be spent in the apartment renovation, the wall fund, that's set out the law report. The town will be committed to the offside superpowers to review their request for capital aid. When the government policy was put into place for FY twenty, which analyzed the process of the development of a five-year plan. After the end of review, the law committee and the board selectmen agreed to freeze the capital budget for FY twenty. Except for I have signed a document, the first time this world belonged to us. The capital budget committee will begin meeting in June twenty nineteen to develop comprehensive five-year capital plan, that will be presented at the twenty twenty annual gathering. The law committee recommends that.
Okay. Town Council, because the bottom of the bill, it says you're not required, it's a super majority of the votes. So questions and comments on that capital budget? All in favor, please vote, super majority, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. Capital budget passes. Article twenty-two. Article twenty-two is an article to amend the code chapter one thirty's laws, section to add section one thirty-five on fire hydrant access. It's been offered by town council on a fire chief, it's on forty eight, forty nine, the law report. And, uh, it's in the motion to the court for my question.
Move that article twenty-two be passed, string to the line. This by law would apply to access to fire hydrants to be maintained for two thirds of the years. The article is more restrictive and was currently in the state fire code, which has been changed around the height. Chief character communicated that he has had issues with past homeowners attempting to save a fire hydrant away. And would be supportive of the article, even though it was not written with the goal of saving the park. Uh, so they want to really recommend that.
Any questions or comments on this article? Line eight, vote. Question on my phone number one.
Um, Jerry, we look to my cross street. Um, I noticed this article doesn't reference the removal of snow around hydrants, which I think is a very important thing to do. Is there a mountain by long term, covers that? Or should this one be amended to do that? And I, I personally, I have trouble, my hydrant, I've got any problems with anything for the past three years. And I think it's everybody's duty to do that. Uh, we should rely on fire hydrants to do that, because hydrants not company. I think it's not responsible. This one, I agree, that's only, it's true.
So, awesome. No.
Probably what I'm here for, not just for the other, but to keep the, 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 the back. Maybe tell me the least awful future.
Okay, so there's nothing else? For the fire.
No, I'm just talking here, I'm just reading, I heard.
Just wanted to do that.
Okay, well, it's all interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, this is the one that's gonna burn, because I got to burn it down, so, that's why I'm, thank you, right there.
I would get warm, especially when we, I'm just setting up. Uh, okay, so maybe next year. All in favor of our, the article now, Article twenty-two, in motion to, uh, to amend that the code chapter one thirty-five, section, relax, section one forty-five, five, twenty-seven, aye. Aye, aye. Leading that motion carries. Article thirty. Article thirty is a motion to appropriate one hundred fifty thousand dollars to the Metfield State Hospital. It's offered by the board of selectmen, it's on page fifty-seven, of the law report. And, uh, we have a motion and a report for a law committee to push on my question.
Move that the town appropriate one hundred fifty thousand dollars, said something raised on the FY twenty taxes, the purpose is to bring them on. Since the Metfield State Hospital was antiquated reforming late August, they explicitly included the development opportunity with various developers, the formal request for permission process. And then added a little follow-up section for the developers. If the process, the M S H C C, determined by a technical analysis, certain aspects, hence a limited safety development, could be prepared in advance and better. Specific technical areas, they intend to focus on currently improving, making a better and more accurate understanding of the likely infrastructure costs. Both from the site and potentially off-site implications from resources from town water, and environmental remediation costs associated with existing structures. Whether it be aggressive redevelopment or the alternative redevelopment. Massive plan is valuable when highlighting these issues, but according to the M S H C C, additional and more concrete information is necessary to better understand the areas to be developed. And to determine how we might estimate a date of potential cost, same or like others to the cap. Board of selectmen request one hundred fifty thousand for this article. We are all well aware, the timing and expenses already gone in the massive, Metfield State Hospital over the past few years. But the board committee believes this article is essential appropriation, it seems necessary to move forward in the time we've been able to present a new proposal with the cap. War committee, direct my question.
Then we have a, a summary of our.
Uh, very big exceptions to the board, within the board of selectmen about this article. Uh, we talked about the fact that there was somewhat similar article, uh, last year, with maybe about seventy-five thousand dollars that was projected by the fact. We thought it was important to make a few comments about this before we go this year. Uh, the purpose of this article is wide covered, and detail is a combination of supporting the development of the state hospital property. As well as contributing to the towns, monitoring the states, and our, you know. Uh, how about one hundred fifty thousand, it would be about fifty thousand of the property, the air culture part for the departmental monitoring. Uh, for any of you that aren't familiar with the property, the, there's one piece of property on the state hospital grounds that was not transferred to the town. The reason it wasn't, because it's downhill from the old light cleaning plant, there are serious poohs in the ground, and the state is showing, uh, in the back. So more interesting, they need to monitor that to make sure they do a thorough evaluation. The other one thousand is to support the effort to the development committee to move ahead and develop the state hospital. Uh, many of you, if not all of you, are aware that the state hospital master plan committee, who gave a master plan, openly read, of the various awards that it's, it's received for the quality. More importantly, that master plan was designed or developed over several years. Uh, with the best of intentions to capture the desires, the aspirations of people that know that's a property. At this point in time, we're trying to move ahead with developing that property, but in order to do that, the development committee assumes needs and funds to support some additional analyses. Uh, that support the town getting ready to actually move ahead with the show. Uh, last year, the development, uh, funds were deducted from R O D A W. You need to realize that the longer we take to develop this, the process of about one hundred fifty thousand, one hundred sixty thousand a year, just to maintain and secure it, it's early in the development state. So if you consider not putting money in to promote development, or to support development, actually does accomplish, because we require that, and I'm aware of that. So, we have to repeat that whole thing. Um, the one, what I want to cover, and this is still not cast in concrete, but for those of you who are concerned about, is this the point of no return? The roller coaster is about to go off, and not a good group to sit hospital. Our current plans are to move ahead, the book, we'll move ahead with certain, not even, in the fall, about some taxpayers to approve the zoning changes that would be required to support redevelopment property, in accordance with the master plan. The developers, at this point, have indicated, they're also, the master plan is reasonable, and there are, there is a lot more interest in doing that, however. Uh, when you have developers come down and sign up a lot of money for a contract, that's in the plan, that number is really good. So, what we think, we're not good for acting, but I should be this way of thinking. If that happens, you won't have a factor of having second opportunity to pass, certainly, not any, any day to day. If you were to move ahead with an R P and want to get a contract, the taxpayers will have to approve disposition of that money. So many of you who aren't sure, you know, what you're committed to right now, the condition right now is helping the development committee, to move ahead with the work, to do the disposition of R P. Uh, and help with down, uh, continue to monitor the model.
Any other questions or comments on Article thirty? The form of the petition.
Jerry, I said, so, um, first of all, to the state hospital committee, I think they did a little job, and this is really part of the time, this reporting, and, and I like to make a comment for that. And here we go, when some people were talking about that plea, hesitation really afforded, was anxiety, and what I'm initial, um, it was the development committee in the R five issue. And the regulation of the state hospital committee, which consults with the involvement, was in our file, we just take it down, we wrote that. The, uh, master plan was really throughout the state's zoning, in guidelines of general design for that property, of what the town would or could, um, stop it. It was too much about, it was just, I say. Um, my challenge on this is that if we, this money, town, it's not even a legitimate plan, it's probably, it's a legitimate buy. And, and number two, um, the only way we're really now developing, we're interested in the condition of our plea. So, I, I want to support the effort for the law money towards this, I think we have now to lay another deal. Um, without having our plea in the next. So, accommodating the clause, it's second clause, we're running out of one, I'm not sure what the name of this new one. Um, the development committee, the master plan, headed, our plea process, had hundreds of papers adopted, this, the R five validated, it was issued by developers. One way of getting in front of the town, we actually discuss, and data, rather than having to work and solve more time to decide whether we have addition of data, the town at this point, deserves the opportunity to actually go to the point. Okay, so I think, Jerry, uh, the goal of this money is to get as efficient money. To put something on the table, like special money. I, I would say, remember, the most certain issue we have, the purpose of doing that, is to get more information, there is still more information we need, because obviously, when this decision is put, it's on me, we have to compare. The costs and benefits of the proposed master plan, and the ever-form visits, as we voted on the most certain time we can, to the costs and benefits of the human property of this town. So I see this money as, the one we're, and is not just how we develop, sort of, the company need, and we need to figure out how we can have. Again, the actual information we need on costs and risks, and the likelihood of success of the master plan is, I believe in a financial scenario, the belt, and the hospital, that's completely, it gives us only fifty-fifty chance of even attracting and successfully developing. So, it is also important, for honesty, when you're assessing, to give it a first, and so, even if you're dealing with developing, if you're going to afford fifty-fifty point, we didn't, it could be, it could tires more. So, it does support, it's whether this is going to be more pushing downhill, in my perspective, it's not, but we, hopefully, we have everything we need to present the plan tonight, obviously. But I would say that this truly, this property has been presented to the town in the fall. And it's out of the cost, it's a fair job, work, and help, and it's a work, I think we need to see that. Even if you want to come to that special community, because I believe it will, well, goes that way. Uh, if the people are in the town, need to have the best information we can, uh, present to them, understand, what we have sometimes, uh, believing about the zoning, for the, the, the second time, we go around, which is still sufficient, it's possible. So I agree with Jerry, that we're not, we're not, if we're not, at this point, we get, we, we, frankly, if we have a second hundred thousand on cash, we, we may have a, usually, usually, say that.
I thought it was one, wait a minute, you're not, you're not, this is, this is God, all right.
You're written on a very, very fluid, I mean. Who else on, in the town of Metfield, willing, behind the effort that the history state, we supply the land, the farm state hospital, six? If you remember, when you, you needed that, after the reform, the foreign unit, those right, the property, the rest of the mansion, the water, and the hill. Clearly, the legal and medical black that was part two, maybe. It created the consequential cost, that would follow on the town, have to be developed, develop the credits. The four thousand, three credits, it's worth, but there's a ton of few hundred, but there, the law taxpayers, maybe they put through the cost, that would ensue from the development. We look also, if you go on you, and, and, if you first pay for most of the taxes, and this, as you believe in the, uh, law report tonight. And that, if the men do, will suck in for day, will then material, we can walk it away, and not worry about the, 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 this is going to help you here. Looking at this, looking at the, at the ceremony, when I said there on the, 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 we're gonna have a two point two increase. And, 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 all five years, that's where we're taxing, that's five hundred thousand for two debt, we'd be saying, not, like, issue. Things are not very good financially, the town, actually, the major, major cost unit, one issue, school, building, and shopping. What, what I'm looking for, I'm looking for an appreciation of what that hospital property gives, many, many times, the numbers that have, 134, a town over there. That is not to say that we shouldn't do something, but to pull up, to be, follow what's been happened, there should follow the course action, that's only proposed, maybe 300 units, if it was 12, 6, 700 units, before the dollar goes down. Do you remember what so, on the 30th April, that we're talking about here, I mean, nothing like a show like that, and that is to be taken down, we know what you're saying, right? We won't, we, no one is really talking seriously about this one, while the dollar moved there, you can't be that far away from developing the full side, not the hillside, but the buildings that are behind, and you have to live. No one wants to develop that in this one. But the, the move is to develop and heavily develop, the upper hands. Now, the rear, the top, the, the plant, and most people who live on that outside, it was a loose source number, you know, that they listed, like, to leave. The simple fact is, you know, when they end up with, with a monitoring, expensive target, because that's always the one that, you can't try to measure, but then the developer has to, but that's all, it's really told. And you can one, one, and three, that's all, to three, that's all, because there's a segment on the community itself. So, I went for a long, about four years of meetings, and I asked for it again, was that you have some change, then look at that plot, and you say, it may not turn, but it's not going to be, that's the goal, it's going to follow on the path of it. The way they do is, lead, you know what I mean? Obviously, I'm still in my place, but I've been in town for 54 years, and I've seen the dollars walk away from us, sad, and leaving. It's all on those on country, for a long, long, long way to reach. So, since that, uh, both of us, when you certainly didn't have that one, we don't, we don't pretend that, but we have a much better shape, and that's where the money, the time goes. And so, it's really, that's it, it's competition. But we are grateful, and it's, the committee, they're very good, they're no notificating, their experience in building, we'll, and they will not cure, ensure that the sound is good, and for once, as we consider the cost to be, me, and sure that, like, the longer than that, we expect and send the money. As we know, we have said, this is very, very, not down. Uh, we know the town has, currently, $198,000, $199,000, the money that's from me. So, we want to do all the time, for we should, as I say, also, the work hasn't been all done, we've got a factory, a total of almost $273,000, that's from me. We know everything about the town, we went back to, but we have a number from. So, it's not all we're doing, that is eventually bound to property, until we receive. What we do with the developments, and what we do on the cost, is something else, we have to figure that out. But if you promise us this, you pull up hundreds of units, you are going to get millions plus, until two of this file, in each generation, this way, we'll be here for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is my, probably my tenth attorney's, uh, town meeting to, uh...
Build a farm.
Yes, I'm sorry. Build sorrow, anyway.
This way it is.
Yes. We're speaking for, I'm, I'm not offended by that. So, I'm around 44 years of medical, in this hospital, 44 years, it's obviously, uh, a cause of, of course, in my heart, I consider, uh, the past 10 years, advocating for funds so that the town would have, we run more consultants to help us pretty much drag the state picking and sorting into the cleanup of the hospital. And we managed to do that, we managed to get remediable settlement agreement for the cleanup in 2014, and the state is continuing to do that cleaning. Now, it's not the major portion of this, one word, one article, but there is a fair amount of money still required for us to continue to manage the cleanup. Just like we can be a little back on, what's, still needs to be done, yeah. So, this year's article is funding for this, for monitoring, and ongoing non-building environmental issues on state property. Uh, the article also provides funding for further advice and consultants on the development of hospital property and on environmental issues that are related to the buildings. This includes demolition, remediation, festive soil passing, with, that is, more than really not my concern. And we are very close to finishing the remaining items, 107. Uh, NECAM is putting forward a revised plan for remediation, one, are still bringing to residential soil savings. The separate should be completed, uh, by June 25. So, we are almost there. The other issue that's still open at hospital is NECAM accepted responsibility for managing and maintenance of the oral area. I'm sure many of you have played oral area, you look out over the river, you walk out, you can watch, you can help. NECAM has agreed that they have perpetual responsibility for monitoring and maintenance of the material that they drag out of the river and use to construct the order. They will be responsible that way, the problem is that we have not yet finalized the language, and we'll find them to do that. And we need this legal consult, environmental legal consult's guidance to finalize that language, and then NECAM will be responsible to keep that area safe or protected. So, I am very much concerned about at least securing that material back funded, to finish the job at state hospital property. Now, we have other issues, I also attended every, every, uh, meeting of the, uh, master plan development. I have some issues with the plan, there are things that I think need to be, uh, finalized and finalized more actively, before, I'm, I'm, I'm wishing, I'm wrapping it. I'm, I'm, I'm wrapping it, I'm wrapping it. The items that need to be finalized by the new public committee, what they're looking for funding for, at least like, how does the town get sewage from the hospital to the county council? How does the town, if not, how is, what else, 23, 40, 70, 80, 30, 40, 70, post, if the commercial, uh, content is not materialized in hospital, how many more units do you need? Does the town have the water supply, do we need the man in the hospital? All that we see need to be investigated before we go out on the street, this is what the, the balance of coming with you, so I would very much, please, pass this over, thank you.
Okay, thank you, it's all for all, the comment after this. For this motion to vote, will we have a motion on Article 30 to appropriate $150,000 for the Menfield State Hospital, there's no other comments, we'll put that to a vote, some majority carries, all favor, please say aye. Aye. The motion carries. It's like that sort of, can you say?
Uh, briefly, for those of you that, uh, come, come meeting the last several years, you might have noticed that, uh, the Warren Committee, uh, is missing the Dawson Jones, dizzying, like, uh, hometown member, Jack Wolf. Uh, who is, uh, soon going to be, uh, moving away from our place, a few towns down the road, uh, so we only had him for half a year in the Warren Committee, but, uh, Jack, you're going to be missed by the town, missed by the Warren Committee, and, uh, personally, I have heard more from you than possibly, and I was, thank you, it was very much. And Tom Menfield, thank you very much, it's a privilege to be here, a privilege to serve, thank you.
Okay, next one, Article 20, Article 20 is to appropriate $425,000 to the other person reporting, uh, benefits, OPEC trust, this is offered by the board of selectmen of the OPEC trust, needs 46 of the Warren Report, required to sue and drive, while Warren Report members in the hall has a motion to report.
Uh, we need the town appropriate $425,000, as we said appropriation, $131,400 to be raised on the fiscal year's money tax, probably, $48,663 to be transferred from the fiscal year, making the county desirable contribution level, um, 01, not only 1, 2. $16,000, $50 to be transferred from the larger price where you pass, $25,887 to be transferred from the lower price where you pass, and $200,000 to be transferred from 01, 3, you pass, to make an annual contributions to the other, most of the one that they've got for OPEC trust fund. The town is operated with the Fund for the OPEC Trust Fund, it can provide building support, including, that's, 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 that's all it needs. This article requires a fund for the OPEC trust fund, $425,000, which is in keeping with the annual funding amounts of the OPEC policy set forward by the board of selectmen and the OPEC community. The Warren Committee recommends this passage, please.
Other questions? Tom, it's Article 50, excuse me, Article 5. If I could put that motion to a vote, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Now, Article 50, Article 50 is not to authorize the lease space on non-legal water towers for 10 years, because it is a lease, it does require a two-thirds of, and a mandate, uh, motion to report this, what?
There are, that's in the passes, bring them along. But if you require any of town leaders to replace his space on the non-legal water towers or air exteriors, each prior approval is for a 10-year period. The second approval expires this year, so the new tenure rule is needed. The director of the DPW and the board of law and steward, right, leader of the Sarnum, the Warren Committee recommends this passage.
Any questions for Tom? Now, we'll just put the motion to vote, it wasn't for a two-thirds, so, all favor, please say aye. Aye, close. I'll leave it to pass, it's probably required, two-thirds of. So, at this time, I get the, uh, the pleasure of being able to thank a lot of people, and also want to thank you, coming out tonight, this is what makes this, uh, this, for yourself, democracy that I talk about all the time, working, not what I, but thank you, thank everybody up, you know, on the stage, all our visitors, uh, to Menfield, TV, the community together, the video, Chris Allen on Sound, we have another professional, uh, right there sitting in the next week, they'll come along, does a great job on our Sound, Tom, that, to our public safety officials, thank you, uh, gosh, the school department, the technology team, and the social staff, and to all the people that work, uh, for us at Town Hall, thank everybody. Uh, we're now just going to vote on free cash, it's Article number 32, and, uh, so Jerry, you have a, a motion and a report.
Uh, I have a positive motion, uh, move that the town authorize the water assesses to use $500,000 for free cash in the treasury for the reduction of the tax rate for this year, 2020. You want me to do it?
Anyone?
I have a positive, I have a positive motion, that is a positive motion. Any questions on, on the move of free cash, and also you do, at the end of all these families, if there are any questions to vote on that, that's all, all favor, please say aye. Close. Thank you, I, I put a motion in, so, Menfield, annual family, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, have a great sleep.
All right, tear this thing down.